Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands Home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Taylor present.
Jones?
Jones present.
Thank you. Brown?
Brown present.
Patterson?
Patterson present.
And English Braga present.
Okay, and I'll call the planning board to order. We don't go through a roll call like that, but the only one who is missing currently is Pamela Harding Barrett.
Okay, great. And I don't, normally we start our regular meetings with a pledge, but I don't think that we'll, we'll do that today. That's okay. We'll just, we can kind of just get started if we want to. And Pat and I had spoken in advance and she's going to start us off with an introduction to really set the tone and the stage for the conversation. And then she and I had spoken about us just trying to have kind of a free-flow conversation as best as we can with, with, you know, the way Zoom works, just to really make it constructive and utilize our time to the best ability. So go ahead, Pat.
I know I had mentioned that to our board and they thought, oh, that sounds like a really good idea. Well, first of all, all of us have received this compendium that our staff has put together, and I really want to give them a hearty thank you for doing all of that. So that we're more or less on the same page as to what we're looking at today. Okay? And I really want to make a point that what we're doing today has not come out of the blue. The, there have been so many studies for Davis Straits. We look at the McMahon Transportation Plan, that was dated 2015. We look at the Local Comprehensive Plan that Town Meeting adopted in 2016, but that was many years in the doing. And I know the Complete Streets we had been talking about for a number of years. And Marlene had given us an example of what they were doing in DC and how they were managing that to make it happen. We have a number of the Cape Cod Commission studies, including, I don't, I think some of you were present at the public visioning as to what we would like to see physically in that whole area. They gave us, would you like this or would you like this? Then they came back with a report on it. We had a Davis Straits study. I don't know that you saw that, maybe you did, on an analysis of stores and businesses and how it makes more financial sense for certain things to locate there. Then we had, they got Union Studios involved and it was a visioning of the property of one owner for a piece of the plaza and showed what could be done there. And so all of that has led up to where we are today. Talking about what Davis Straits could look like in the future. And we have the Davis Straits Reset Study. That is being led by, a lot of which is in the packet, is being led by Union Studio and its local representative, Horace Lee Witten. They've met with us, obviously not physically, but they've met with us and have gotten some input. And what we and they would be looking for is today, as Megan indicated, a conversational input from all of us, back and forth. And we also would hope that you and maybe others who are looking at us would fill out the questionnaire. That's part of this package, to give them a written record of what you're all looking for. So, that being said, now, Tom, have I missed anything?
No ma'am, but if you'd like, I'm prepared to sort of do an introduction to get everybody sort of the background that you've seen in your booklets, but for our broader audience about the Davis Straits and the process, if that, if that meets the pleasure of our respective chairs.
That's fine.
I think that's great. Thank you.
All right. So if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen for a bit and for a few minutes to take us through this first part. And then we'll take this down so we can, so we can see each other there. So, good morning all. I'm Tom Bott, I'm the town planner here in Falmouth, Mass. Some of you have heard me say that before. We are here, let's see. So I think you see an agenda in front of you on the screen.
Not yet. It'll come up. There we go.
All right. So for those of you who are here for the planning board meeting, here's our agenda. For those of you who are here for the selectmen's meeting, select boards meeting, here's the agenda, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. To the staff who put together the booklet you've got in front of you, thank you very much. You can't get things done without the staff. Melinda, Michaela, and a planner to be named have done great work at putting things together for us. And I also want to thank you all for coming in, our technical staff. Eileen Preston from FCTV and Justin Shanahan from IT, who are running things in the background to make it seem like this is very seamless. The, a lot of the things we're going to be talking about today are on our website that our consultants created for us. So when you click into that and the viewing audience can view, can tap in at home if they'd like. So our website looks like this. You can get a link to it from the planning board website here at the Davis Straits form in the side banner. You click on that and it takes you to the Davis Strait page, which will get you to davisstraits.com. So there's a couple of different ways to get there. In a little bit, we are going to click on this presentation, this Form-Based Code presentation. It takes a few minutes for it to download. So the folks who want to look at that later on, just take a few minutes to get to that. So in talking about the project and the goals for the project, the project being the Davis Straits Reset, there's not one specific development project we're talking about. We're talking about creating a more livable, walkable zoning for the area. To provide for consistent and attractive, walkable environment, to redevelop strip centers with buildings that are closer to the street and more in character with the traditional New England design. We believe because big boxes don't want to be big boxes anymore, and there's only so many 24-hour gyms that you can put in as an interim use, we really think that property owners will get a better return by redeveloping. And this will allow for a wider variety of housing opportunities. So we borrowed this from the Cecil Group. It's a public document from the town of Amherst, in this case, when they're looking at that. And I want to talk about what is envisioned in Form-Based Code or not design guidelines. We have those and we'll touch on those briefly in a little bit. But those benefits of adopting the Form-Based Code are typically seen as an ease of use with effective diagramming of development standards. A more predictability in the physical outcome of development. There are pictures and graphics and diagrams in Form-Based Code. Because as we've heard, a picture can be worth a thousand words and there are lots of pictures and diagrams within a Form-Based Code. We believe we'll get a higher quality development as a result of well-defined development standards, a stronger connection between development plans and regulations, and a more efficient approval process. We define a standard to be built to and if the developer is built to that standards, they get to, they get to get their ticket punched and they get to move on. So I'm going to take just a couple of minutes here and go to that presentation. And we'll get to listen for a bit to the dulcet tones of Jessica Fox. She'll walk us through what is Form-Based Code. So let's see how I do with switching screens here. I am back and we're going to try this and see if we... I'd like to think that you're seeing a picture of an illustrative case study on the screen right now.
You are.
Fabulous. I've got three screens in front of me, so I'm just trying to get my cursor down to the one to hit our play button here.
Form-Based Code. The planning board is exploring the use of Form-Based Code as a way to meet the housing needs of our town, while at the same time protecting the environment, resilience, and the character of our community. Community Goals and Public Policies from our local comprehensive plan. Policy number one, Falmouth shall continually analyze the zoning rules that guide development to ensure that they're flexible, fair, and innovative to improve the quality of the public streetscape. Policy number two, Falmouth shall thrive and grow by guiding development into convenient and pleasant villages suitable for the 21st century, balanced with large reserves of open land. Policy number three, Falmouth shall encourage a high-quality, durable-built environment that respects the culture of the community. Policy number four, Falmouth shall provide for a comprehensive network of access corridors to accommodate many modes of travel. Policy number five, Falmouth shall encourage increased density primarily through redevelopment in some areas and discouraging development in other areas. Falmouth first adopted Euclidean zoning in 1925, being one of the first towns in the Commonwealth to do so, named after famous Supreme Court case, Town of Euclid v. Ambler Realty. Basis of used zoning was to separate noxious uses from residential settings. Issues with Current Zoning. The segregation of uses has also led to isolated zones for commercial, residential, and institutional areas, which are only linked by auto and thus failing to create walkable pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. While conventional zoning closely regulates a variety of aspects related to use, parking, buffers, et cetera, it does not regulate the aspects that help in enhancing the character of buildings, streets, and open spaces, which together form a neighborhood. Comparing Zoning Types. Conventional zoning specifies density use, floor-area ratios, setbacks, parking requirements, and maximum building heights. Zoning Design Guidelines utilize conventional zoning requirements and they specify the frequency of openings and surface articulation. Form-Based Code dictates street and building types, or mix of types, build to lines, number of floors, and percentage of built-site frontage. A Form-Based Code is a land development regulation that fosters predictable built results and to high-quality public realm by using physical form rather than the separation of uses as the organizing principle for the code. A Form-Based Code replaces all or part of the zoning ordinance of a city or town. A Form-Based Code is a regulation, not a mere guideline, adopted into a city or town zoning bylaw. A Form-Based Code offers a powerful alternative to conventional zoning regulation. Instead of concentrating on land uses, meaning the use of the building primarily plus any outdoor commercial use, this new type of code is a legal design regulation that describes the desirable physical form, placement, size, and bulk of buildings within the environment. It also addresses the size of blocks and their relationship to one another. The regulations and standards in Form-Based Code are presented in both words and clearly drawn diagrams and other visuals. They are keyed to a regulating plan that designates the appropriate form and scale, and therefore, character of development, rather than only distinctions in land use types. This approach contrasts with conventional zoning's focus on the micromanagement and segregation of land uses and the control of development intensity through abstract and uncoordinated parameters. For example, floor-area ratios, dwellings per acre, setbacks, parking ratios, traffic. To the neglect of an integrated built form, Form-Based Codes are regulatory, not advisory. They are drafted to implement a community plan. Ultimately, a Form-Based Code is a tool. The quality of development outcomes depends on the quality and the objectives of the community plan that the code implements. Main Elements of Form-Based Code. One, Regulating Plan. A plan or map of the regulated area designating the locations where different building form standards apply. Two, Public Standards. Specifies elements in the public realm: sidewalk, travel lanes, on-street parking, street trees, and furniture. Three, Building Standards. Regulations controlling the features, configurations, and functions of the buildings that define and shape the public realm. Four, Administration. A clearly defined and streamlined application and project review process. Five, Definitions. A glossary to ensure precise use of technical terms. Optional Code Elements. Architectural Standards. Regulations controlling external architectural materials, quality, and appropriateness. Landscaping Standards. Regulations controlling landscape design and plant materials on private property as they impact public spaces. Signage Standards. Regulations controlling allowable signage sizes, materials, illumination, and placement. Environment Resource Standards. Regulations controlling issues such as stormwater drainage and infiltration, development on slopes, tree protection, solar access, et cetera. Annotation. Text illustrations explaining the intentions of specific code provisions. Visualizing Better Streetscapes. The form of our towns and cities affects the quality of our lives. The facades of buildings should welcome people, not repel them. Buildings should contribute to the public realm, not hide from it. Great streets happen when road and building designs are matched. Small towns can be revitalized by building on their original form. How We Regulate Urban Form Shapes the Life of Communities.
So we got a little technical glitch here. There it goes.
This slide shows the existing illustrative case study for Form-Based Code outlined in red dotted lines. Note, Staples is the building with a white roof and a blue pin in the middle. In the top left-hand corner, you will see an example of the proposed regulating plan utilizing Form-Based Code. Current Zoning for V2. Max Density: Six Dwelling Units Per Acre, shown here as 20 Dwelling Units Per Acre. Max Height: 2.5 Stories, shown here at 2 to 3 Stories. Shown with reduced setbacks for multi-family. In the right-hand corner, you will see a key showing the different types of buildings used in this diagram. Mixed-Use Walk-Ups, Walk-Ups, Manor Houses, Double Deckers, Town Houses, and Duplexes. Totalling 4,500 square feet of retail space, 52 units, and 20 dwelling units per acre. This is a rendering of what Form-Based Code could look like. Timeline. Starting with the district local technical assistance being awarded in February, the work on this project will continue to November when we will seek funding at Town Meeting. Then, in January 2020, public hearings will be held. Then, come Town Meeting in November 2020, it could be adopted into the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
And as you saw, that schedule's been pushed back a bit due to, well, a number of things. But we're essentially about a year behind on that schedule. So I'm going to just share for another moment here. Michaela has just put into the chat the link to the davisstraits.com for folks. So, back to, to our discussion for just a moment here and then I'll get off the screen. So I think what you see right now is a map of the Davis Straits area on your screen. This is the aerial photography showing Gillingham, Main Street, and the general area that we were just talking about. These are from the plans. Here is a depiction of the building footprints themselves. And so, in our website, there is, on a second tab, a vision for the development for the area. The study area is roughly 77 acres along Route 28, Jones Road, Worcester Court, Falmouth Heights, and Scranton Ave. We're looking at three different... We're looking at three different character areas. There were four character areas described in the reset plan, those being Route 28, off Route 28, and that residential edge. And there are three, there are numerous major intersections in the area as well. The question about the zoning is, do we look at creating a zoning overlay district? Or do we look at creating a new zoning district for the Davis Straits? In the case of an overlay district, the underlying zoning, the lot, big boxes would remain. And someone could build a mixed-use development next to it with offices, residences, and retail within the development. So the idea is, do we want to go all in and say, this is what we want to see for this area and replace the underlying zoning with new zoning? Or do we want to have an overlay district that'll allow the two proper, the two uses to coexist as best as they might be able to? When we look at the use of design, it would be more of a by-right use rather than a special permit use due to the thoroughness of the regulations that we put together. In those regulations, we would look at front setbacks, building heights and masses, minimum lot sizes, and parking in both the rear and sides along some streets, as well as off-site parking and some shared parking. As far as the residential density of the development, this might prove to be market-driven. There are a number of options where there's no cap on the number of units. As long as the buildings meet the design guidelines and the parking, you can let the developer decide how many units. There could be a minimum residential density. Minimum number of X units per acre might have to be, would have to be required. Or is in most cases, a maximum density that identifies the units per acre you would have in the district. Within those design standards, and once again, as we talked about, these are design standards, not design guidelines. They're not optional. You build to the depictions, to the zoning. In that, we look at site design, frontage design, landscape, signs, and architectural features. As I said, other parts of the town have design guidelines that are employed under Site Plan Review. In fact, we'll be having in March, another Citizens Planning Training Collaborative Session with Falmouth resident and former Falmouth Town Planner and former CPC Chairman and current Wareham Town Planner, Ken Buckland. Ken worked for about 20 years for the Cecil Group and he will be presenting to us on the use of design guidelines. Like we did last year with roles and responsibilities of Planning and Zoning Boards of Appeals, we'll invite our neighboring towns to join us because good design by everyone makes for a nicer trip to and from Falmouth. As part of developing this Form-Based Code, we'll be relying on some of the previous visual preference surveys that were done for some of the previous studies, including community resilience by design. We were fortunate to have Union Studio do that work for us and very fortunate that they are continuing on that work with developing the Davis Straits Form-Based Code. And there are other considerations in this as well. Nitrogen management, as we know, is a major issue on the Cape. This would be connected to public sewage. There is no historic resources as identified within the district at the present time. And then looking at the public realm improvements, updating street regulations in right-of-ways to make sure streets have adequate sidewalks and multi-use paths, street trees, and street parking as called for in the Complete Streets policy. As we can see here on the website, this is just one image of sort of the central area and I'm going to click over to the website because it's got a little better picture of what we're looking at there. So those traffic and transportation improvements, we're currently exploring concurrently other options, including traffic calming and road configurations, better bike and pet infrastructure for the district to allow you to get around easier without the car. So, I'm going to stop here with the screen sharing before we get into the hierarchy of streets and transportation. Just to stop talking and let's... Just to stop talking and let you guys take it from here. So thank you.
Thanks, Tom. That's great.
So we want to open it up for discussion and in particular to get the your all, your input on these things that Tom has just brought out. Starting off, we could say with, do we want to do overlay? Or do we want to do a new zoning area? What are your questions? What's your input? Yeah, Doug.
It seems like the overlay would be the more cautious approach, but what do we lose if we try to apply that?
What we lose by doing that is that people can go ahead and do whatever they're doing now. That is the underlying zoning. So it could potentially be unlikely that anybody would do what we're envisioning to make it a better area.
Okay.
Bob?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to go with an overlay district because of what CVS did. CVS bought the land next to it, tore down the Davis House, and expanded their footprint. And I like that little stretch between CVS and the Enterprise rental. And I'm be fearful of somebody coming in, buying up all those lots, tearing all those houses.
Good point.
Okay, Bob is frozen up. He may not realize it.
I have another question if I could.
Yeah, Doug.
So if we're really just regulating the look of the exterior of the building and not concerning ourselves with what's in the interior, could we lose control and have like, who would think to do it? But you might have a manufacturing outfit that's loud and obnoxious in the middle of your nice walkable space. How would you control that?
Tom?
Well, as we talked about, form-based code is more concerned with the look and effect, but you clearly have to define what is allowed and what's not allowed in the district.
Okay, so you don't lose that.
Correct. So the last thing you want, and live workspaces are great, artisan workspaces are great, maker spaces are great, but you don't want someone who's doing lead smelting or something like that in the midst of your, of your district.
Right.
There are uses that are permitted and those that are not, but we're just not down to the point of that's the driving force. It's more the orientation and presentation of those buildings.
I'll just jump in and just say, I don't really, I mean, I think the overlay to me doesn't really seem bold and transformative. You know, frankly, I think it seems confusing. So if we're going to take this on as a project, I think you just have to take it on. I mean, the overlay still leaves it essentially to, you know, somebody who is really forward-looking, a developer coming in and doing something, you know, really substantive and changing that space. Whereas we actually have that opportunity to drive that development. And I think we just, we abdicate a lot of that potential if we do the overlay.
That's the point, Megan. Thank you. This is a bold, forward-looking way of handling redevelopment in that area. I, I don't know why we would opt to stay as we are now with, oh, well, maybe you could do this. The other thing, part of this point is that we want to make it easier for developers to come in to know that this is what they can expect. Right now, it can be very confusing for them. If we do it as an overlay, it's going to be even more confusing. One of the things with form-based code, and a lot of people are put off with the term "form-based", you have to call it something. One of the things with that is you can depend upon what you can do. So you can start out and, and make a plan that you can pretty well guarantee you're going to be okay with.
Right. I mean, I think there's that give and take, Pat, is what you're talking about. So you're, you're taking by, you know, kind of creating those regulations. But the, the give is that you're making it, if they know if they conform that kind of particular piece, that, that their project is likely to go forward without as many of the hoops. So it's a, a nice way to try to balance that, I think, so.
I think I could give sort of an illustration here, which I, I know Jim knows, and I know we've been reading about, is that a lot of these big box stores are not surviving. The malls are not surviving. And so what they're looking to do is to recreate. It would be rather nice if we could say, well, within these parameters, you can do what you want to do. I think we're seeing that at the redevelopment of the Kmart Plaza. That's going to take years to do. And also, I think people should not be afraid that this is going to happen overnight because it doesn't. So if we don't have a plan in place that gives some guidance, we will get whatever. Anybody else? Please, jump in.
Could I just ask for there to be some, mostly maybe for the folks who are joining us, Tom or Pat, or so, could someone just talk a little bit about how form-based codes have been utilized by a lot of communities to promote affordable housing? And sort of grow our housing stock? Because I think there have been some examples of communities utilizing that in order to get more housing, which obviously, you know, kind of trickles down to making there be a larger inventory and affecting prices. Because I know housing is a big piece for a lot of folks.
Yep, Tom?
Yeah, so form-based code itself doesn't call out affordable housing. But we have talked about in the kickoff meeting that we had, I'm going to say it was last, well, it was when we could all be in a building together. We were in the, in the Herman Room. And we had talked about, would the supply of housing affect the price and drive down the price in a classic supply and demand curve? And while some people would like to think that's a possibility, it's unlikely. The zoning that was just, or the, the law that was just passed, that hopefully we'll talk about a bit later on for multifamily and for mixed-use developments, includes a component that allows town to develop zoning as a, as a simple majority vote for housing in mixed-use development rather than a two-thirds vote, if it has a provision of affordable housing in it, at least 10%. So there are a number of different things that we can employ in encouraging affordable housing in the development through the use of the zoning, through the use of inclusionary zoning. And I think that's the conversation that's been going on with the planning board, trying to look at creating a multifamily bylaw for the entire, for use across the town, not necessarily in the Davis Straits that would have an affordable component to it as well.
Charlotte? And then Jim. Charlotte, you're muted.
Doesn't say anything about affordable housing, but it's had that effect in places it's adopted it because it really encourages mixed use. It wants to return to a mixture of residential and commercial and business uses. And that, the residential things, because they're going to be larger buildings with more units, tend to be affordable, particularly if the town that adopts it makes that part of the formula. So it's had that effect without being directly aimed in, in that direction.
And Jim?
Yes, I think by its nature, allowing more units is going to force the smaller units in there. And especially if you put a minimum in certain areas. So you could actually put a requirement for affordable housing. But for the developers to just build a lot of smaller units actually, and require them to be mixed with retail, it just forces them to have stores on the ground floor and smaller units on the upper floor. The math just works, and you could do that with, with the minimum amount of units required and a maximum. And we could also put on a, at least a minimum of it being affordable. But it's three different ways to go at it. But this, the volume of housing will be much, much, our existing zoning results in 2,000 square foot units if you, if you build by our existing zoning. And if you build with form, you know, if we increase the unit size, we can get it down to where the units are are 500 or 700, much smaller units. And that's, that's really what the control is, but you can do it both ways.
I think I would ask you to think about Main Street. You've got all of these shops with residences above. Not every one of them has residents above, but there's a certain charm in that. That's the kind of thing that can be looked at if we adopt form-based code and do these little concentration zones, if you will.
I saw Doug Jones's hand.
Yep.
Well, I understand the advantages to the town for form-based code. Is it, is this advantageous or disadvantageous for the realtor or for the developer?
I would ask Jim to speak to that, I think, being that he's a realtor.
You're getting a lot more rent. That's the whole idea. You're not only getting your ground floor retail rents, but you're getting your second and your story and a half of rents in it. And if we design the forms right, that it will, that's the whole thing. It has to be not just profitable, they have to be incentivized to actually tear down what they have and rebuild. So it has to have a pretty good financial incentive to work.
Tom?
I guess that would have, that's what has me a little bit worried, is, is this something that realtors are pushing us to do for their benefit? And that's where I get a little bit leery of this being pushed by the realtors.
It's not being pushed by the realtors, Doug. This is, I think, the planning board pushing it. Bob, you had a comment.
Yeah, this stems from way back with the LCP meetings where we were talking about ways of having friendly 40Bs essentially to, in other words, to create affordable housing that we didn't have to have separate developers or have to go through the 40B process, that the market would create the affordability. And form-based code was one of those tools that helped create that. And just like Jim said, the market will dictate it. And if we do it right, and the units are small enough, you can only charge so much for so many square feet.
Hey, Tom, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that the, the trajectory of retail is not up. The trajectory of retail is flat, if not declining. And we look at the amount of retail space that's there and the projections for retail going forward. We think that looking at the ability of having multitude of uses and a multitude of tenants on those same parcels versus one tenant provides the property owner an opportunity for more rents, more return because of the, there'd be more of a demand for those type of units. It's sort of like with your economic development strategy. If you have one, one company in town that's providing 1,000 jobs and that company goes out of business, you've lost 1,000 jobs. If you have 100 companies that are providing 10 jobs or 10 companies that are providing 100 jobs, if you lose 50% of those, you still got 500 of those jobs available. So it's the diversity of the uses, the trajectory of the rents, and the downward trajectory of frankly, the retail business and the use and necessity of those big boxes and the sea of parking that goes around them.
And Doug Brown, next.
I'd say that my comment would be, given the developer, the unlimited ability to determine their own number of units, I think is a great incentive. So I think that's a real positive with this. It's a little bit of like Wild West zoning, but I think that as long as you have the controls in place, it could be good. I got another question is, how Mashpee Commons developed their space? Did they use form-based code or some other kind of zoning? Anyone know that?
Tom?
Yeah, Mashpee Commons, and there's a classic picture that starts this off with a 60-something Chevy in a black and white picture in front of a grocery store there. Mashpee Commons was a little bit like the Pine Hills in Plymouth, where they started the development and it didn't fit with what was proposed. And so they went to the zoning board of appeals to get variances and waivers and things like that. And they kept picking at this for a while until finally they said, well, maybe there's something going on here and developed a zoning for that. It wasn't form-based code, but it was more of a, of a, what's the CNU? Totally going a blank on, and I don't want to get into tech, but the conventional neighborhood type of development, where you've got a mix of those uses in a tighter grid. While there are design elements to it, those are more of design guidelines in zoning. It was developed with time, but it started off with just going to the ZBA every time for a variance for this and a variance for that to allow that to develop as it did.
Okay.
But the eventual outcome of it is like form-based code. Okay, Charlotte?
I'd like to go back to Doug's comment about our concern about is this being pushed by realtors? And look at it directly, this really benefits realtors, and that's great. But think about all the other parties to this that also benefit. There's a huge mutual benefit for the town in reaching its goals for affordable housing, for workforce housing, for more housing for downsizing seniors close to walkable areas, improved transportation, better lighting. There are a much more attractive community. If you think about how Davis Straits looks now, where individual developers did whatever was allowed, it's not an attractive part of town. But if you look back to old Main Street, the part that we all really love and want to protect, that actually is the way form-based zoning pushes you to make things look. There are many, many benefits. And usually when there are so many different factions who are going to be benefited, it's a win-win. So just because the realtors are among the winners, should not be an argument against this.
Jim?
Have to, using the term realtor is not really appropriate. Realtors is a, an association for selling houses. If you polled all the realtors in town, they'd be totally against this. They'd like to have mansions and sell big houses. If you use the term developer or property owner instead of realtor, it'd be more accurate. That's just the point. I, as a realtor, selling big expensive homes is the best thing. And most realtors don't care about affordable housing. I didn't even care, I got kind of indoctrinated into it by forcing the plan and going through the local comprehensive plan. And I was turned around from when Pat, when we first talked about it. I said, I don't want to change the town at all. Keep it exactly the way it is, it's working fine. I don't care if people can't find places to live. I want to sell what we have. And Marlene made it clear, you can't do that, Jim. If your job's in the play, you're going to start looking for other things. So let's not use the term realtor because that's an association of people that sell single-family homes primarily. And it really isn't meant to be applied here.
Pam?
This actually goes back to smart growth. This is actually the epitome of smart growth, where you can live and work and provide affordable housing and have shops above or below, you know, street level, apartments on top. And this goes back, I don't know, whenever we started smart growth, 15, 20 years ago anyway. And it, it just fits into what society is looking for. So that you get the streets that are much less traveled. So you get transportation, you know, we haven't spoken about transportation yet, but so it's a concept that I, I don't think benefits realtors or whomever. I think it's really to benefit the community. And it is a wonderful way to provide affordable housing, where people don't need to rely on an automobile.
Doug Brown?
I'm pretty convinced that this is a good idea. I wonder if it'll be as easy to convince town meeting to, to change the zoning. I wonder if we should be considering using form-based code as an overlay in our historic districts to begin with. I feel like there's a sense of urgency there because some of the historic districts seem to be getting targeted for developments. And I feel like that really changes the landscape. I wonder if you've given any thought to that.
We had not, Doug. Thank you for bringing that comment up.
I'm just going to read, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Pat.
No, no, I was going to say, but remember, you're either doing it, when you're talking about a historic district, you're doing it as another overlay?
I would think so to begin with. I would think an overlay to begin with, just kind of, I think it would be a more easy thing to sell to begin with and get to start to use the tools of form-based code and understand how it works.
Because if you do it as an overlay, remember, they can do whatever they want to do with the underlying zoning. So that doesn't necessarily protect, I think, what you're trying to protect. We'd have to look at it a lot more closely.
Well, I just envisioned, there was a development done several years ago where there was an old red barn in West Falmouth, and it had to be moved to a new location of the property. And the developer did as good a job as they could to, to try to make it look historic, but it just changes the landscape and it's not the same road that used to drive down. So I feel like that, I think, could be a protection that could be put in place with the form-based code.
And Megan? You wanted to say something, yes?
Yes, I was just going to say two things. One, I was going Yes, I was just going to say two things. One, I was going to just encourage folks, another really good resource. And I'm sure the planning board has looked at, but for other folks who are joining us, something that kind of helps give more information about forms-based code is, you know, there's this group, StrongTowns.org, and they really are proponents for form-based code, but they have a lot of, you know, really helpful information about how forms-based code in, you know, really make your, it's part of what Tom was talking about earlier, kind of help make your economy more resilient. And so it's, I think, if people want to kind of dive deeper, the resources that, that the planning board and Tom have provided today as well as maybe taking a look, that's a, I, I think a good resource that I've looked at in the past. And then I was just gonna say, at some point, we don't have to do it now, but maybe Pat, towards the end, we do have some comments in the chat that maybe we can at the end wrap up with by reading and, and speaking to.
Yeah, I particularly saw one about protection of green space.
Yeah, so we can do that then. Thanks.
Nancy? Do, do those resources include which communities in Massachusetts have already implemented form-based code? That was my first question. And then my second, and this is just a thought, where we think about planning and we think about smart planning and includes bringing families into Falmouth, young families with, with children. And so my, my thought is, do we ever include the schools to think about how hopefully bringing young families in might impact, or how could we, how could they participate in bringing young families into Falmouth? That was just a thought.
Tom, could you handle that one?
Uh, yes, the, the, the various resources and links we've got in here don't have a, a list of communities that have implemented form-based code. Uh, I do have some of those that I'll be happy to, to, to share with the group. But they are not within the links that we, we have there. Uh, in regard to the encouragement of younger families and, and older families for that, one of the things that we have in the Cape and in a lot of areas is the predominance of single-family three-bedroom houses. Every time we get a 40B where someone is going to provide affordable housing, the default are three-bedroom units on individual lots. Under form-based code, that would allow a mix of uses, smaller ones and twos and three-bedroom units to allow folks to get in, to start off, to have that smaller unit as they start to grow their family, to move out of that into something else. But the marketplace presently in the zoning that we have is providing solely single-family dwellings. We had a considerable conversation with the developer who's looking at putting the 40B on Brick Kiln Road about looking at doing apartments there in smaller units. Uh, he told me he just couldn't get the numbers to work for the rental units. And so while we encourage people to do that sort of thing, even under 40, we were not seeing a lot of that. So form-based code in a mix of uses and the idea of you've got a box and this is called a 3,000 square foot box. What are you going to put in that 3,000 square foot box? Are you going to put, you know, 10 units in there? Or you, I don't know, you can get 10 units in a 3,000 square foot box, or are you going to put two units in it? So having that space that the developer can build, what's the choice of units there? And typically, if you're looking at rentals and things like that, you're going to opt largely for more smaller units in order to both sort of flatten out the curve of people coming in and coming out and having, you know, more renters to, to, to pay for things and help you cover your note.
Thanks, Tom. There's a comment or a question actually from Rosemary Carey as to whether the plan includes two-family homes, which makes homeownership more affordable and more, uh, I would assume it's more reasonable rentals. The plan, as anticipated, would include all kinds of housing. It would be a gradation to single-family homes. So you'd have duplexes, triplexes. But that's kind of what we'd have to determine, how we want to grade it down to blend with the neighborhood and where we want the houses to be, what kind? Do we want shorter right against the street? Do we want taller? Do we want shorter against the street and taller behind? Doug?
I'm wondering about the practicality of the application of this. How many different landowners are in this plaza area?
I believe there are four, there are five, I believe, definitely four. Jim is nodding.
So that kind of precludes private ownership of single-family homes in this particular area, at least this part of it.
Well, I would venture to say that we don't regulate zoning by by, by owner, by rent, by ownership or, or rental.
Did you say something?
Uh, yeah, I was trying.
Okay. You'd have to get the homeowners on board.
Well, I mean, in order to have
internet connection is unstable. Surprise.
Okay, why don't we just start, hold on, can we just, can we back up? Cause Tom was explaining something but kind of got cut off. So Tom, can, can you finish or start again?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you. So zoning doesn't regulate ownership. Uh, it regulates the, the, the type and the structures that are there. So we're a private property owner, let's say the, the, the folks who own, and I, I never, I never say when we tear down the Christmas tree shop because that, you lose points for that. But if we, if we tear down Staples and the state people who own Staples build a new development there, it's their call as to whether they want to sell condos with ownership or to do leases and rentals and things like that. So conceivably, that person could say, all right, I'm going to redevelop this as a, as a, as a mixed-use development, as an ownership development. I'm going to sell everything and walk away, or they may want to stay in it as a, as a rental property and have those units that way. So there's no provision in zoning for ownership.
And how would the lot lines be drawn up then? Would that be the responsibility of the property owner to subdivide and, and make those options for if maybe they wanted to sell part of it to spur their redevelopment?
Correct. Code envisions smaller lot sizes and a variety of lot sizes, perhaps down to 10,000 square feet, as it says in the Davis Straits. But that's part of developing the, the zoning over this, this, these next months and looking at both those types and lot sizes. In addition, you would come in with a plan that showed new connecting streets. We've only talked about or shown, you know, Davis Straits, Worcester Court, Spring Barrow, those existing roads, those primary roads. But in order to get access to that, you would look at smaller street grids. And we get back to talking about some of the transportation issues. We'll look at the hierarchy of streets and how those streets might be designed. Uh, last thing I just want to say, Rosemary, we also saw your comment about getting to net zero by 2050. Uh, it didn't fall by the wayside. We'll circle back around to that.
Okay. I think I'd like to make a comment right here though, too, because of the directions that, that this is taking. When we're asking about the property owners, there are five. This is where it would be particularly important for the select board and the administration to get behind this and to present it to those property owners that the town is going to be behind this. And this is what we would like to see you do. Because just sitting here and doing it act of participation, marketing, if you will, to the owners. And that would be better coming from the head of town government than it would just from the planning board.
I was gonna ask that question is, has there been any outreach from the owners? Cause this has been out there and I would think they probably know about it.
Jim tried. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, they, they certainly all have been sent to Davis Straits. They've all been sent by the density done right proposal we went through. But I just wanted everyone to think about this and just a different way to do it. Where you can get caught up on form-based code and I think it scares people. They don't know what it is. Another way of looking at it is just really strict design guidelines. And it's the same thing. It, so don't get caught up on the, the language of it. Uh, design, form-based code is really design guidelines. And, and that's what we're, what we're talking about, you know. And the other thing is about the different types of housing. If you look at the Davis Straits proposal, it starts out the edges and even the little diagram we looked at today with the 45, with it, with the, all the units in it, do you notice that the houses along the single-family homes are all two families? And then as you move deeper into it, it gets it. So you actually can say, yes, there'll be a buffer area. This strip here will be two families and then threes, and then maybe some apartment buildings. And you, and, and you rise it up to the more intense and then take it back down again. You blend it in to the neighborhood. That can be done with form-based code or something else called design review or design guidelines. All English.
Pam, and may I ask you, Pam, when you're finished talking, to put yourself on mute, please?
Well, yeah, I was coughing, sorry.
A good bit, yes.
Sorry. So I think, I want to circle back a little bit to what Nancy was talking about. When we look at what do we want our community to look like? I don't think we want the community to look like me or Pat. I think we want the community to look more like some a Pat, some a Megan. We want, we, we need to have a much more heterogeneous looking community than every time the news comes on and it says the Cape has the highest number of 65 and over or 75 and over. I'm going to say this, and I've said it at every public forum. Until this cat town brings fast internet, we are never going to bring young people back here. They can't start incubator businesses. They just can't. They just don't want to come here. But if we can entice them with high-speed internet along with family housing, uh, community housing, multifamily, however it is, that we can make it affordable, we can make it very appealing for a young family to come here. But we can't do it without high-speed internet. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that. I've said it everywhere. I'm going to continue saying it. And I know the town's working on it, but it's way too expensive. But if we have duplexes, if we have, if we set up a community where there are young families, maybe with a swimming pool or a little small rec area, then it's conducive and it's appealing for people. So I think we have to look at it in a much larger. Um, and if you want to look at an interesting, go online and look at what South Weymouth did with the Naval Air Station. Um, it, it, it is a, um, they, unfortunately, they hit a very bad time with the economy when they built all of these homes, R and D. Uh, they built it out and there, there's more housing there. And that was an overlay district. And it was my understanding, this was a 20-year uh, program, which I think may be coming to an end. And it provided the overlay to dictate what went on. At the end of the 20 years, the underlying district could reclaim. So Weymouth, Rockland, Abington, not Abington. It's another A town. Anyway, then they reclaim what the zoning was if they wanted to, or they could remain with the overlay. So there are any number of ways to do the overlay district. That had to go through the legislature. And, um, had the timing been different, I think the whole project would have been different. And it's gone through a zillion ownerships already. But you just ought to look at what they did because it was really interesting. It was very innovative at the time. And it can be done. I mean, there's no reason why we can't have our own version of an overlay district. But you can't do both. You can't have an overlay district where the zoning calls for one thing and allow the underlying district to maintain their zoning. It's, it's in total conflict. So we'd have to figure out how we wanted to make that happen.
Thanks, Pam. And Megan, you had something you wanted to say, I believe?
I, I was just gonna say, sorry, I was gonna say something that might be helpful in the future. And, and Julian and I can talk to Tom and work on this is um, maybe having someone from a community that has engaged in this exact process and is further down the line be available for a meeting and to answer some questions from the public and talk about some of the challenges that they, they encountered. Um, you know, as they started to develop in this way, where they are in the process. I think it would be, uh, cause we can talk about sort of theoretically, but none of us have engaged, uh, and please tell me if I'm wrong, if people have done this in another community. But none of us have really engaged in this sort of, um, really transformative process. And so we're talking about possibility. We're talking about, um, you know, the steps. But I think it would be wonderful if we had somebody who could really answer those very real practical questions um, about things like that for the future. I think it would go a long way to advancing um, the conversation. And then the other quick point I would make is uh, I, I live in Hatchell, so I'm, I'm frequently in Mash because it's just closer. And I am, I'm really struck. Uh, this happened last weekend. I was at Starbucks and I saw all of these like 30-year-old people and I didn't know where these people had come from. And it was really, uh, you know, I actually called my husband. I said, it's so strange, you know, and what, and it happened the weekend before. And what it is, is folks, some of them are living there and they are going to the spin classes. And then after the spin classes, they're walking to Starbucks. It's the same group of people because we keep seeing them. Um, you know, it's like 15 or so, and they kind of interchange. And then they're going to brunch at, at Blue or somewhere else. And so, you know, again, it's that, that really dense development where one particular area draws people in for multiple activities. Um, it's very striking. I do not see large numbers of people like that congregating in Falmouth in the, in the same way. You have our student base and then, you know, it's a huge gap. So it's just an interesting observation that when you create those spaces, it does draw people in.
Thank you, Megan. This is our vision and has been for a while of what would happen there. Tom?
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, we have identified about 80 property owners in the 77-acre district. And we provide that information to our consultants as well. And in our most recent meetings, we were talking about how typically we would have, you know, a big room and bring people together. But we're looking at developing a couple of focus groups, uh, one with the larger development, the larger commercial development owners. Uh, another with the folks who are sort of residential owners, particularly the folks on the edge. Cause it's a very important, as we looked at those character areas, to develop the Davis Straits under form-based code or what I've suggested, we call to our consultants, maybe we call it Falmouth-based code rather than form-based code, because we're trying to reflect those, those building types that we see in Falmouth and on the Cape through the visual preference survey. So we're looking at having that outreach to those proper, commercial property owners and residential property owners uh, to get their buy-in, to get their comments and their input. Cause while you can develop zoning in the lab and it's all technical, state-of-the-art, all widgety, if you don't have a buy-in from the development community, then nothing's going to happen there. So it's very important as we look at employing these principles and developing in a way that is, that is appealing to the town and appealing to town meeting members who will vote on that, that you have that buy-in from the development community. Cause if you just do it and say, hey, look what we did, uh, you're unlikely to get the number of takers in the outcome you hope to have. So engaging with those folks is critical. And we're working on that through our consultants with Union Studios and Horsey Witten Group.
Okay. Um, when we put this part of the agenda together, Tom was the one who came up with the idea of Davis Straits as being an umbrella. And then there are six other parts of it. We've touched on design guidelines that would be in place, as you saw when we were going through, uh, form-based code. We have definitely touched on multifamily housing and how we see that it can happen here. Um, site plan review. We have not so far done anything with transportation, coastal resiliency and transfer of development rights. Now, transportation is a big part of any form-based code for that area. The idea is to, with the types of, of housing that we're envisioning there, we could allow parking for one vehicle only. We can allow, um, by the way we describe it, we can allow, uh, parking in shared parking. We want to decrease the reliance on individual vehicles. Uh, so that's all part of this live, work, play in that area too. And so I'd like to hear some more commentary on transportation needs if we could. Tom?
If you'd like, I can just, uh, go back and share my screen for a couple of minutes and, and bring up some of the images for the road networks and transport. for the road networks and transportation that's in the Davis Straits, uh, just for a couple of moments, if you will.
Sure.
So transportation, as we know, isn't strictly about driving someplace. Uh, and I like to think that what you're seeing right now is an image that has, uh, some pictures and so street grid on it.
Yep.
Perfect. So these are the primary roadways in, in Davis Straits. And the thing that benefits that a denser, uh, more compact development, uh, uh, benefits is, uh, an increased use of transit. The more folks you've got in an area, uh, the better transit works. In addition, having that mix of uses, so you don't have to get into your car and drive someplace to go get a gallon of milk or half a gallon of skim, uh, uh, whatever the case may be. To have those smaller sort of, uh, retail, uh, shopping, convenience shoppings, uh, daycares, dry cleaners, uh, grocery stores and things like that in the neighborhood. So within those roadways and that we look at that are exist in the development, uh, we also look at a, uh, a hierarchy of streets within the Davis Straits. So the primary streets, uh, the secondary streets in those neighborhood streets. And here you see in this image, that sort of interconnection of streets that Brown was just mentioning, uh, how do we get to that? So within those street types and those building setbacks, uh, and these are from the Davis Strait study. We see that on a primary roadway, you would have the ability for the sidewalk, uh, the median with the street trees and a shoulder. Those two eleven foot travel lanes that we typically see, that's fairly standard. Four foot shoulder, once again, that green strip for trees and street furniture. And space for a multi-use path, ten foot wide multi-use path for joggers, for bicyclist and things like that. As we get into some of those secondary streets that come off of that, uh, the street width gets a little narrower. Uh, the street width gets a little narrower, uh, though maybe there's parking on the side of the road here. Parking and street trees and things like that are those things that tend to be traffic calming mechanisms that you can't see quite as far down the street. Uh, there's things that are in sort of in your, might not walk on sight, but, but basically slowing you down from how you feel as you're, as you're driving through the area. So when we look at those character street, uh, this is sort of a, from the Davis Straits. It shows how that street network might lay out with the streets, the parking and the street trees. And there are ones like this for all those particular developments. Uh, we've been having some discussions with the Transportation Management Committee about complete streets. And why you won't see that term as a proper noun in the Davis Strait study. Uh, it's likely because the Davis Strait study was being developed prior to the Commonwealth's launch of the program. Uh, but the street profiles, which are within the district, reflect those best management practices that we see in complete streets. As we get into those smaller areas where we've got the ability to have the, uh, those connections, uh, pedestrian connections in the area as well through the various districts, uh, as we zoning. And then one of the things that's in the Davis Strait study that doesn't get talked about a whole lot is the development of the greenway, uh, that's looked in the area. And one of the reasons that that doesn't quite get maybe the, the, the discussion that we've had with, uh, redeveloping the area is in the conceptual greenway plan, uh, to make these connections between the area, the presiding area, residing area and, uh, connections to downtown. People will walk further if there's something to do, something to see as they're walking along that way. So here in the conceptual greenway plan, you see this very lovely green space. But right here in the middle is a note that says, "A former mall parking lot converted to grassland habitat." Now, while I can tell you, it's likely easy to encourage a developer to tear down a big box and put up a mixed use development. It's probably a bit more of a sell to ask the mall to tear down the mall and put in a wetland habitat. There's a lot of stories about, you know, our mall's going to continue to be this way. But part of the Davis Straits development includes this, uh, this, this connectivity, this pedestrian connectivity and allowing some of the resource areas to return to those, uh, to, to, to that habitat for stormwater, uh, retainment, for, uh, uh, you know, sea level, uh, rise, uh, to create, uh, this greenway area within the development.
Tom, can I just, Tom, can I just jump in and say, but there are ways that we can incentivize that piece of it. I mean, you know, we can look at these in different, we can incentivize a big developer to maybe do something like that. I agree. I think on their own, probably not, but I'm sure that you guys have talked about and thought about ways that we could sort of sweeten a package to get them to do something like that.
There are no shortage of moving parts, uh, and no shortage of options. Uh, and, uh, that's why we're having these conversations to have people, uh, add to the mix, uh, to get folks to, uh, to understand what we're trying to do, to bring more people in to participate. And I'll make a couple more pitches before we get off the screen today about the Davis Straits, uh, uh, survey as well. It's both available online and we're putting together a hard copy for that as well for those folks who don't have a computer, uh, uh, or don't prefer, uh, excuse me, doing things via the computer.
Jim?
Well, transfer of development rights is a tool that actually can accomplish this. And that, that's, that we have considered it, and that's why it's a tool we think we need to have. It has to be refined and defined. I don't have, you know, it's very vague. But that's the tool. You basically say, you give this up and we'll let you do this over here. We'll transfer those rights from there to here and we get what we want.
Okay. Um, and you can see how the transportation all fits in, reducing the number of, of vehicles, which we all know is kind of critical here in Falmouth in the summertime. Um, coastal resiliency. As the sea level rises, we have to take that into account because we do have some low areas in that area. So there, I don't know that there's anything to be further said on that. And that would be Paul, who might be able to make a comment is, Paul, do you see anything that you would like to comment on that in regard to?
Uh, not really. I say the attachment was a presentation I made to the, uh,
Right.
board about four months ago on the activities of the Coastal Resiliency Committee. Uh, we are presently working on the final report. We've gotten an extension to complete that from the select board. And we're actively pursuing the report moving forward. With the specific case in this area, there is some flooding areas that we need to consider, but, uh, I can't add anything specific at this time.
Okay. But Pat, just to that, I mean, just in a broad sense, and Paul will correct me if I'm wrong. But, I mean, we want to try to encourage development that is on our sewer system. I mean, even though I know we, you know, we've got ma- massive upgrades and, and we're working on that and we're going to have to, um, have significant improvements on that end. But this whole area, we're talking about, you know, when we talk about coastal residency, one of the things we always worry about is infrastructure. And, you know, having some, a better hold and developing where there already is some strong infrastructure, you know, it, we're not talking about developing along the Shining Sea Bike Path where we know we're going to have, you know, infrastructure vulnerability. This is, even though there are some issues with where this is, we have some really important infrastructure already there that we can take advantage of and consolidate and improve. Um, and so I, I do see that piece as somewhat connected to some of the concerns that the, um, Coastal Residency Action Committee has, has brought to us already in some of their updates.
Yeah, but you're right. This is why it's a very good area to look at what we're trying to, to propose here because of all the infrastructure that is in place. Um, does anybody else have anything else they wish to add to this discussion? Or any questions? What I would like to throw out that we can both, both boards can discuss on their own is rather than saying, okay, we had a great meeting. I'm wondering if we should get a very small working group together, one, you know, from the select board and from the planning board to continue to work on this and to bring the ideas to our board, uh, our boards. Uh, Charlotte?
Um, Pat, it sounds like you're getting ready to close down the meeting and I'd be very disappointed if we do that before we bring to the attention, the planning board brings to the attention of the, uh, the selectmen. Um, more about design guidelines and multi-family housing. Because what we're trying to do is be sure that the two boards are really in sync with one another. The planning board has, um, already approved design guidelines. They're kind of buried on our website under a very clunky name called Contextual Design on Cape Cod. We approved this, uh, going on two years ago in October twenty nineteen. And then COVID nineteen prevented us from finishing the, uh, the publication of it. We need money for printing it. We need to finish finding the illustrations that are local illustrations. But they're already there. They're already approved. Th- this was an adaptation from work that the Cape Cod Commission had done. And as Jim said, it really advances form based zoning because it says, if you, if you're a developer in town and you have, are proposing a project that requires site plan review by the planning board, in other words, a commercial project, you are going to have to show us that it adheres to these design guidelines. And that's already approved. And I don't know, because it's gotten very little play, I don't know if you were really aware of that. If you've looked at them, if you can see that this is what we're trying to do and it's already in place. The other, and I, I really hope that you do, um, go to the planning board website, click on it and take a look at them. Uh, that's what we're trying to do. And the, uh, multi-family housing, we have a subcommittee that has drafted
Right.
uh, what will become our, uh, proposed bylaw going to town meeting now under the new rules, which is really stunning. The things that have been sitting up with the legislature for several years suddenly got a great big boost. The legislature passed it, the governor signed it. It's the law so that a lot of what we're talking about, uh, trying to do, they're now saying, go ahead and do it. It's legal. We need to have our own legal department go through the new law, see where we're going to come. But we can do things now by right that, uh, haven't been possible before without a, uh, two-thirds vote of town meeting or a two-thirds vote of the, of the special permitting board. And now it's just going to be a majority thing. It, it just got much, much easier to get multi-family housing in town. And what the multi-family bylaw that we're developing, um, says that there will be multi-family housing if it, if it gets a majority vote in town meeting in B one, which is just Main Street downtown and B two districts, which are, which is Davis Straits and bigger than Davis Straits. And it includes the villages except for Wacoit. So that's a big change. Now we can, we can do this. Um, and I think we, we all need to really become familiar with the provisions of the new law that was just passed for the state. Um, and with those design guidelines and be aware that we're trying to bring to town meeting a multi-family, um, bylaw. We had wanted, it's gotten bogged down. We had wanted, um, it to be rental because that would give us the greatest hit on our, um, housing inventory. It would, it would get us up and over the ten percent very quickly. We can't do that because we cannot legislate ownership. So you can't say it has to be rental. A developer could make it rental or condominiumized or, uh, private ownership. We cannot tell them that it has to be rental. But we can say that in these areas, B one and B two, you can build up to twenty units per acre by right. And that you would have to follow the design guidelines to do it. So those pieces are already in place. That's, uh, are coming into place with the multi, uh, multi-family housing once it comes to it. And the other thing, Pat, I think we should bring to their attention are the changes in site plan review.
Yeah.
That we think, uh, once again, brings more into the purview of the planning board to, uh, to approve. On, I don't know if you want, uh, Tom to explain that? Pat, or what the changes are in the site plan review that will be going to a town meeting, um, this spring in April.
That's in our packet. We did not go over that.
No, we didn't. We haven't talked about it.
The changes are in there and this is for the knowledge of the select board. Tom?
Yeah, I'll just talk briefly about that. So there are two changes that are being proposed to site plan review for the April town meeting. Uh, currently the site plan bylaws says the site plan is invoked when there's a change in development that results in an increase in a thousand square feet. Uh, the poster child for why we wanted to change this is the, uh, the gas station uh, next to Cape Cod Bagel. I think it's Garrett's Gas Station these days. So there was a gas station there before they tore it down and they built another one. I didn't come to the planning board for site plan review. There was no review of the drainage, no review of the parking, no review of the design because the change didn't amount to a thousand square foot of increase in space. To take that example to the extreme, if the mall decided they wanted to build the new mall and they tore it down, but didn't make it more than a thousand square feet larger, it conceivably be done without planning board review. Uh, it's unlikely, by the way, but, uh, the idea is that there needs to be a different threshold for looking at site plan review and encouraging the development to, uh, to look at those design standards to make sure that the implications on the site don't have stormwater leaving the site. And we get the ability to perhaps to increase some connectivity. Typically through site plan review, we bring the property all the way out to the edge of the property. But sometimes there's ability to add some connectivity. We'd like you to improve the sidewalk here, maybe an interconnection to, uh, the property next door, maybe a pedestrian path. So those are some of the things we're looking at, uh, basically, uh, opening the threshold a little wider for site plan review. And the second part of that is currently there's two years for someone to, uh, to move on a plan that's been approved. Uh, we'd be extending that to three years because sometimes things get bogged down with the economy, with financing, whatever the case may be. So after you've got a plan that's approved, you'd have three years rather than two years to implement it.
Thank you, Tom. Um, yes, Doug?
I just wanted to follow up on what Charlotte said about the, uh, multi-family housing coming along. And we, we don't have the ability to dictate that it could be rentals, but we could bolster our affordable housing fund. And then, um, use that to incentivize the, the rentals as we did with the other development on Brick Hill Road. That's going to be all rentals because we gave the developer a million dollars to do it. And so we could continue that trend. I had brought up previously and I'm gonna, uh, actually request that we consider it at our select board meeting in the near future that we take the local portion of the, um, short-term rental tax and apply it directly to affordable housing. Seems how, it seems to me that the affordable housing is being most impacted by these, uh, short-term rentals. And so I think that's the, an appropriate thing to do. And I think it could really increase our availability of funds for affordable housing.
Okay. Charlotte?
Um, thank you, Doug. And I'd, uh, also like to point out that we have used quite a bit of our, um, over the years of our, uh, uh, community preservation money that goes toward, um, affordable housing. We've used it for single family homes. And part of that is because most of the town is owned for that. And of course, it's a desirable outcome, but it is not the most desirable outcome. It's not the desirable outcome perceived in the local comprehensive plan where we would in fact have, um, different types. We would have two, three, multi-family housing. And perhaps, given that that's our goal, most of that money should go toward multi-family housing, not single family housing. The new law really changes, um, the way we should be thinking about the use of that money.
I muted myself. That law, I believe, was just signed February fifth, if I'm correct?
Yes, it's very, very recently.
So, you know, don't feel bad if you don't know about it. Charlotte picked it up and brought it to all of our attention. I appreciate that. Now we have to figure out how it's going to have to change our zoning bylaws too. That will have an impact on some of the zoning bylaws, I believe.
Well, Pat, you were mentioning having a, a committee to look into this. On the committee, uh, we should certainly, or at least we should have the support, um, of Frank and Iri so that, uh, we can be sure we're reading it correctly, that we haven't missed anything and that we're taking advantage of what it's allowing us to do.
Correct. So we've had really quite a wide ranging discussion today and I've noticed a few things coming in on chat. The concept of, when we were looking at this from the local comprehensive plan viewpoint and then further on, the concept of if you're dealing with this whole area that we're looking at, Davis Straits, is to, as Jim has so aptly put it, be a place to live, work and play. And some of the comments that have come in, will there be green space? Yes, that's the only- And some of the comments that have come in, will there be green space? Yes, that's the only way you can really have something that you can enjoy living in. Will there be playgrounds? We anticipate that there will have to be playgrounds to entice families, children coming in. Um and when you're looking at multigenerational housing, that's one of the reasons that this is being done. A real problem on, I'm assuming Nantucket, I know I've heard the comments for Martha's Vineyard, is that as people age, they want to get rid of their big houses, but they have no place to go. So we're looking at making this a little bit smaller that would accommodate the desires for people as they age rather than aging in place in a mansion if um if that would be their desire. So I had brought out so that this um we buy our our um laws have to meet twice a year, have to meet. Um but I don't think I want to see this languish. It appears that we're all on board for working ahead somehow with this concept. And that's why I brought out, maybe we need to have a small working group to propel this further.
I'd be I'd be interested in uh being part of that.
Okay.
I would too.
Okay, so Doug and Pam and Charlotte, well, that's getting bigger than small because I I don't know. So do we want to say two from each board?
Like, well, yes, because then if we have more than that, we have to uh then call, yeah. Then for us, three is a quorum. So two and even and we'll go over this. We don't need to, but I know even if it's an official subcommittee committee, we also have to to do some something with that if it's a regular. I know, Julian, we've had this issue come up in the past, but but we'll address that. It's it's that's not an issue. It just is about how we uh agenda or note any meetings if.
Yeah, that's
But that's fine.
The concept is whether the select board and the planning board would like to be able to further this rather than just the planning board working on it, and then six months from now, we bring it back to you and you say, no, that wasn't what we were talking about.
Yep.
So that we can have some regular conversation on it. And it looks like we've got the interest in doing that.
Mm-hmm.
Um yes, Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to get back to the questions about playgrounds and park spaces and things like that. Those tenants in the complete streets, uh and it's in the in the primer that I included in the packet, and we'll post the whole packet on our website as well. Is this uh need for the relationship between those public and private spaces? We talked about the scale and how they relate to uh the 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 buildings, to the streets and the block types and and civic spaces. You know, they talk about creating outdoor rooms where you could have those pocket parks and those places where people can meet and greet. Uh there's typically vibrant civic spaces in that that includes places for parks, pocket parks, uh little plazas and things like that within the development. Uh and of course, the employ uh the the uh the use of complete streets as well to allow folks to get from where they're at in a walkable environment uh to some larger place spaces and things like that. So if we create through complete streets in the Davis Straits, something that emulates the town center and have a walkable, vibrant connection between the two, you have the opportunity for people to come to town, to stay in town, to enjoy both the benefits of a new community that's created through complete streets and also be able to walk in uh or or take bicycle or have some other options to get to the town center, whether they want to come in uh in uh to town hall or whether they want to come down to just enjoy the shops and restaurants downtown. So we're not that far away if there's a a a pleasant way to get there rather than just walking down sidewalk on the side of busy street.
Megan?
I I just want to say, I know a couple of times we've talked about Main Street as sort of the ideal, and I'm just gonna sort of be devil's advocate for a minute. Um and nothing against Main Street. When I was born, we lived over Main Street and then we lived over John Shuster, and then we moved over Eastman. So I I have a lot of love for the housing on Main Street, but it is antiquated and it's limited. So I I don't want the public perception to be that we're kind of replicate, the ideas to sort of replicate uh what is a very quaint and charming but but very um sort of old set of development. Main Street is limited, right? You don't necessarily have great apartment space for families or some of that multigenerational. So, you know, I I want people to think about we we have the benefits of what Main Street would look like with that opportunity to walk and get to lots of different types of places, places to eat, places to shop, green space. But the idea of this is something more than that, so that folks don't just get that idea that we're trying to kind of hold on to. I think one of the things we do a lot in Falmouth is that we try to hold on to the past a little bit, and sometimes it really um you know, it's a, sorry, my daughter's singing up in the bedroom. It really um sometimes is a turnoff for younger folks. Um and you know, people with families or or young professionals because they do want a little bit more of a more modern um you know, feel to where they're living. So I just want folks to to not just picture Main Street as what this concept is.
Yeah, it's not a continuation. If anything, it's a continuation of the New England charm. But not a continuation of what is. And I think Pam, you had your hand up and then Doug.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I I don't want us to forget that the Y has a location on the other side of the development from Brook Brook uh Brick Hill, um the other side of the church. And that if we're looking to draw young families in, that's part of what's going to bring them here. There is no way for children to learn to swim because we don't have a pool. And this will, you know, that's the one thing everyone says is, well, we're surrounded by water, but our kids don't know how to swim. And I think that there is very little that can bring families, other than my high-speed internet, um than a Y that benefits through the Silver Sneakers program um down to, you know, with two pools and wonderful recreation um facilities. That that's going to be a big pull for the community, you know, once the financing is in place. I just don't want us to sort of lose sight of that. And I agree with Megan. There is something charming and wonderful about walking down Main Street. But I've seen some of those apartments and either they have to have a complete redo. Um but we need more than that. You know, we need more. I we haven't talked much about a shuttle to take the traffic from Main Street, especially during the summer, to have a shuttle where people can park maybe at a school or a church and be shuttled to the beach so that I mean, you can't get into Old Silver Beach, and we live a little more than a mile from there. And unless we're there at eight thirty in the morning, you just can't go there and park. So uh there are just so many issues that I think, you know, we need to to be covered, you know, in some of these meetings. Um along with finding either land or money to fund some affordable housing housing.
Yep.
Um because I love what Doug said about using some of that revenue to go toward affordable housing, and it's going to take, you know, quite a bit to
Well, it could be that we use some of that uh how housing money also as where you were talking about using a carrot to have some of the developers make the changes that we're looking at.
Right. And I I'm I'm just curious as to the board's feeling about, you know, some developer that may come in that's going to need to put in a package plant, a sewer, a small sewer treatment plant. Because communities all over the Commonwealth are doing that because there is, and I know we're very unique because we're on the water. Um but we have to be innovative and think a little bit outside the box, so it may not be all in the one large sewer treatment plant that we have, but that there are developers that may come in with a large development that can provide that there's enough land. It's
Well, are you are you talking about this in regard to Davis Straits too, Pam?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and yeah, well.
No, the Davis Straits is on the sewer. But if we're off of, if we're off of Davis Straits, I mean, I don't think, well, it's all right. I'll keep that.
Okay, Doug and then Bob?
Just wanted to comment. Um I think that if we're going to create this development, it's I think it mentioned in the uh paperwork that we may waive some of the restrictions for amounts of parking. I think we're already in a tough spot with regard to parking downtown, and I think we need to think about either partnering with the RTA and getting a bigger commitment for them to maybe a Falmouth-centric bus. We need more frequent trips of buses cruising around Falmouth to make it uh connecting to downtown. And I I don't know if it's time for us to consider buying our own trolley and running it year-round or or whatever the option would be, but I think we need to start to focus on something other than just cars going downtown.
You're absolutely right, and thank you for saying that, Doug. That's definite. Um Bob and then Sam?
Yeah, just a quick comment on uh Doug's uh comment about shuttles. Uh you go up to the high school parking lot in the summer, there are over seventeen little buses that sit there idly all summer long. So that's that's something that we should look into as far as having shuttles from the parking uh areas and all that. Uh but the other thing I I constantly hear about affordable housing and Falmouth is land-rich. And I come from uh an island that was two square miles with twenty-five thousand people on it. And so we didn't have the option of just, oh, we want to build affordable housing. Let's buy some land and and uh put up some buildings. And I've I've been promoting this idea of uh affordable housing advocates and entities and agencies should be buying uh stock that's already built, the uh the inventory that we have. If we can give a million dollars to a developer to build uh a forty B that's only going to be twenty-five percent affordable, why can't we give uh money to uh Falmouth Housing Authority or uh uh Falmouth Housing Trust and let them buy existing stock and uh transfer that over as an affordable unit? This idea that we have to build everything from scratch is ridiculous because when you don't have the land to do that, like of of many other places, you you have to be creative and and do things a different way. Um we need to get out of this build, build, build and uh and uh building on land and finding land. We need to look at what we have and repurpose a lot of what we have.
Thanks, Bob. Sam?
Yeah, actually, my comment was going to be right along Bob's uh idea. I think this working group really needs to to include a developer. I know the Valley Group actually was part of that redevelopment effort up there in Waymouth on the the old Naval Air Station. And, you know, Christian Valley and his family live here in Falmouth. So I think if you can include their thinking into it, it's probably going to be a way of communicating out to those people who own the property in the Davis Straits re redevelopment area where their vision can be, you know, included in part of the proposals that get made to those owners to say, hey, this is what you could do with it, and here's the kind of 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 income you could expect to 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 receive from that redevelopment.
Thank you, Sam. That's a fabulous comment. Uh so we're we're looking at maybe five members of the committee now. Okay, and John?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify what Bob said. Uh so that the committee and everyone at home understands the developer on Brick Hill Road that received, uh I think it was nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, received that money because he was going to develop twenty apartments, twenty rental units, five of which were going to be for affordable and deed-restricted. So the town gave him the additional money so that he would make the whole project affordable. So the town for the for the nine hundred and sixty-five thousand purchased fifteen more deed-restricted units. And that's pretty cheap money, sixty-five thousand dollars a unit. So the whole project is affordable in perpetuity. It wasn't a million dollars to build. Is to get purchase fifteen more units are going to be built, so.
And that sixty-five thousand is our standard.
Quite well invested.
Okay, Charlotte?
Um before we get uh stuck on this tiny uh new subcommittee, it I think Sam's comment is really very good. The number of people from each board is limited, but not the number of other people. And it's good to get more thoughts into the thinking process instead of restricting it.
It is. I would caution, however, that a working group of more than five is probably not exactly a working group that's going to uh get a lot of product coming out of it because it gets too big to function right. Seven, I think, would be the absolute maximum, but I question whether that would um be as efficient. So but this is something I think we have to further discuss with our boards individually. Um just so it doesn't languish, when would you like to have such a committee up and running?
Well, I I mean, personally, I don't see why we wouldn't have it up and running, you know, sometime in March. I mean, it's really, we this, these two boards know, you know, we'll have a conversation and we'll know who's going to represent um the boards. And then if you're doing, I I agree very much with Sam. I think you've got to have, you know, one of the the weaknesses of a lot of the work that I think town boards and committees do is that we're in our little groups of our own boards and we don't get input from the from all the entities that these rules and changes will impact, right? And then so it's like you're doing the work twice because then you have to reconvince and and kind of rework things once you're reaching out to the public. So to have a developer on board, and if we think a little bit more about maybe, you know, someone from housing, um because so much of this is kind of a discussion about it. Um so I think, you know, if we have a month or so to reach out and see who we can get um from those kind of more outside groups to to be part of it and exactly how we want to constitute it, I don't think that it should take more than um, you know, a month to get the board created and then they can start meeting.
I agree with you, Megan, but I I'm reaching out to see the opinions of people, so.
Yep.
Um I would, so then we're going to look towards sometime at least by the end of March, if not mid-March. Okay.
Yep. I I think that's, I think that's important. And I would say that we can, we can, you and I can talk and then bring it back to the boards about kind of, you know, crafting what the mission is for for this working group um and and some real actual, you know, measurable, you know, do this kind of thing by this date so that it's not just, again, replicating what we've already done. But one of the first things I would love for them to do, I'm just going to put this out there and the boards can discuss it later. I really would love for them to, one of the first things would be to work with Tom to try and get an outside somebody who's done this, worked through this in their community to kind of make a presentation, um even if it's just to the working group um to and then brings it back to us. But some idea of of some of those pitfalls and challenges, I think it would be really helpful to start you know, if we're going to dive into this, I think it would be really helpful to start understanding the nuts and bolts of where the challenges are with some of these things.
Yeah, my own feeling is if we can get such a person, it would be best if it could be presented to both boards.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Yeah, um because if we are in sync on this, and it sounds like we all want to work towards something together, which is to be further defined, then if we have an initial knowledge, both full boards, as to what the pitfalls might be, um we're ahead of the game there too, I think. So, Tom?
Yeah, I just want to say that's a great idea, Megan. I wish I'd come up with that. Uh but uh we will, we will, we will get on that. Uh and and just addressing the comment about, you know, uh make, you know, Main Street is is Main Street, but let's not, you know, recreate Main Street down the the street. Uh obviously, the, we're building uh as people look to redevelop with uh few less constraints than you've got in in existing right-of-way there. So we're fortunate that the town has passed the stretch code. So anything that's new is built, it's going to be considerably more energy-efficient and quieter that way as well as a living environment. Some sort of development which gives people an opportunity to maybe own one less vehicle uh works very well for the occupants as well as for parking requirements as well as for the planet. Planners, we use a number of about nine thousand dollars a year is what it costs to own a car between payments, insurance, uh fuel and things like that. So if we can create a scenario where a household would have one less vehicle, that's nine thousand or ten thousand dollars in their pocket to cover housing costs. Because you've got this type of denser development, you can have those things that Rosemary had asked about about ride shares and EV parking systems and things like that. Where you've got two cars, you've got an appointment somewhere else, you take your your card, you tap on it, and you get uh one of these car-sharing services uh to uh to have um that sort of use of a vehicle. And those things happen because of density. Uh and you can't just have one sort of in the middle of nowhere. So this type of developing, you see, benefits us by having those sort of things by creating the type of development we're talking about with parking at the side, at the rear. It gives an opportunity to have uh solar carports and solar garages uh that are behind these spaces, so. So what we see is the facades of those buildings we're familiar with. And behind them is sort of this infrastructure of modernism of of having rooftop solar, of having, uh, a parking under solar carports off the streetscapes and in the backs and the side yards and things like that. So those are all things that we'll be looking at and talking about as we're developing the regulations and how those play out. Uh, and to make my plug, as I said before, uh, we do have a survey on the, uh, on, on the website. It's a Survey Monkey survey. We are looking right now at putting out some postcards to folks to send out if people would like a hard copy of the survey, that we'll send them out one. Uh, so they don't have to develop, they don't have to go onto a computer if they don't want to. So we really want that feedback from the community, the greater community, as well as from the development community uh, to identify what those concerns are, what those needs are and try to incorporate them in as we develop the zoning going forward. But there's a lot of opportunities to have that compactness of Main Street without necessarily, you know, it, it, it'd be, I don't want a hardware store in Davis Straits competing with Eastman's because I go there at my lunch to get stuff sometimes. But it would be nice if there was a nice shop that you could live over top of, um, that didn't have all those, uh, all that charm that Megan grew up with on, on Main Street. And I did not know that story. That's a great story.
Okay, well, I am very pleased. I think we've made a lot of headway on the Davis Straits issue and talked about multiple other things too that are concerns of the, of both boards and the town. And so, thank you all. I'm so pleased that you look like you really want to push this idea forward.
And the. Oh, thank you. It's, it's great. And I think the, the idea of a working group, Pat, is wonderful. And we'll just kind of move this, um, in, you know, direction where we're, like you said, in six months, we're not just kind of rehashing the same conversation. So, yeah, um, you and I can touch base and, and then go back to our respective boards, but plan for something concrete with a working group, um, you know, in, in the next coming weeks.
I'm pleased Tom kind of ran with it too because I hadn't said anything. It hadn't come into my brain until right now. So I think it'll be a very productive.
Right.
So, and Megan, I think it's time to move on to the discussion of the fire station. Okay?
So, yes, thank you. So Julian's going to kind of walk us through this, but let me just start by saying, you know, for the, for everybody here and for, for watching that obviously this has been a conversation that has been, uh, quite literally decades, decades, decades in the making. We have had, um, you know, issues around the fact that our current um, fire station model has, um, some deficiencies in it in terms of coverage. And this has been known, uh, we've had studies done. This has been something that we had a lot of clarity on frankly, um, thirty years ago. Um, and even before that, there were studies about the fact that, you know, the sort of Hatchville um, area was underserved. This whole topic has been a little bit more, you know, sort of nuanced with issues around, um, the West Falmouth, um, Fire Station. And so we've been talking about this as a board quite a bit. Um, it's, you know, issues around the fire stations have come up in the last couple of, um, town meetings. And so it's clear that I think the public, rightfully so, is very concerned and, and attuned to this issue. We had a wonderful working group that we put together that, um, you know, drew upon, um, a lot of strengths of the individuals who participated. And what we did was ask them to take a look at some of the data we had from an outside consultant and look at some runtimes and, and the call volume and, and where the calls were coming from for the last, I think, three-year period. And then come back to the board and, and give us an idea of, um, where of, excuse me, a new fire station um, should be, um, cited. And one of the, um, and so, you know, they came up with the idea of where it would, would be and then looked at some of the potential pieces of property that were available and, um, kind of landed on the fact that the town owns property on Sandwich Road where the, there are some fields and um, basketball courts, uh, right next to the, um, Unitarian Universalist Church there. Um, Pam, you know where, right where. I know that's a stomping ground for you ladies. Um, and so, um, what we're doing now is the board hasn't voted on this, but, uh, we know that it's going to need weigh-in if this ultimately becomes a spot um, from planning. And so we really wanted to bring it, since we're all here today, kind of do the presentation, have some preliminary discussion, just so it, it really bolsters um, the input we'll get from the public. We will vote on this at our next meeting. Um, and, you know, some of the conversation we've had. So we're assuming that there'll be things that we, that maybe haven't come on our radar that you, that you folks will see. Um, and so Julian's just going to kind of walk us through it and then we'll have a conversation, um, and go from there. So Julian, go right ahead.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Megan. First, I would ask if Justin and Michaela, who I think are two hosts, could bring on, um, Tim Smith and Peter McConerty, they're attendees. And, uh, both, uh, Chief Smith and Public Works Director, McConerty ha- have been involved in, uh, in an ongoing manner in this, um, location and conceptualization, uh, process. As you noted, uh, Megan, uh, we did have an initial discussion about this at the Select Boards Meeting on February first. With the idea that we would be coming back a week from Monday, the twenty-second, uh, with a suggested, suggestion to the board that, the board will consider voting to affirm a, a lot split at essentially eight sixty Sandwich Road, which is a parcel of property, uh, going back to a town meeting action, uh, in the early two thousands, which was placed under the, uh, oversight and control of the Select Board. And as, as been noted, we have several fields have been built there, um, as well as a parking area. Uh, there's about, uh, a little over, uh, somewhere in the area of, uh, four to six acres, which remain, uh, undeveloped and open. And in that southernmost corner adjacent to the property line for the, uh, Unitarian Church is a suggested, uh, approximately two acre parcel. Uh, thank you for that screen share. Tom, this was a, uh, an aerial with, uh, that's been, with the assistance of Peter McConerty has been assembled, uh, which shows just what I'm talking about. Again, this is all uh, town-owned property under the control of the Select Board. Uh, we have been in touch with the Recreation Committee. I've also reached out both to the, uh, Unitarian, uh, Church as well as the, uh, uh, Jewish temple nearby as they have a cemetery adjacent. Advising them of this discussion. As you noted, Megan, it's been going on for some time. It's a multi-year process, but it's come into more focus, uh, in the last several months, going back to last fall when the Citizens Advisory Committee recommended this as their, uh, this area as their primary site for, uh, the next fire station. And, um, the, uh, the red conceptual areas, and that's all we have at this point. The first, the, the, the one in the, uh, the lower right is a suggested location for a relocation spot for the playground which previously had existed, uh, next to the Gus Candy Community Center, conceivably would be relocated there. Uh, we've had discussions with the Recreation Committee about that. Um, and then southernmost corner, approximately two acres, as noted for proposed fire station site. Uh, and the remaining area west of that would, uh, would still be undeveloped. It's, uh, as I recall, slightly bigger than the two acres we're suggesting for a proposed fire station location. Um, much of that two acres, we think, we do not have a fire station designed as yet. But much of that two acres would, uh, include setback areas, particularly uh, from the, uh, Unitarian Church property to the south, uh, to be respectful of that. Uh, but allow, uh, ample, uh, space for a Sandwich Road location for this uh, new fire station, this much-needed facility, as you noted, Megan, it's been talked about for thirty-plus years. And, uh, here we have an opportunity to, uh, uh, to finally move forward with the board's concurrence and the support, obviously, of continued support of residents and others for this, uh, a much-needed public safety enhancement. If the board is, uh, does vote to, uh, allow us to go forward with a lot split, we're working with Town Council on this as well. Uh, we would, uh, split off, uh, again, approximately two acres there in, in that general loc- in that specific location, actually. And then we would ultimately be going, uh, working with the Planning Board on a site plan review. Tom could make a few more comments about that. Uh, site plan is an important part of the process, site plan review. Um, but we would, uh, our hope would be, and again, I welcome comments from my colleagues on this, uh, uh, this as well. Our hope would be that, uh, we, we have several things that we would need to accomplish, uh, in order to move forward. The preference would be to have a debt exclusion on the May twenty-twenty-two ballot. Asking, uh, Falmouth voters to, uh, give us a vote of confidence in, uh, a debt exclusion funds, one-time debt exclusion funds to construct this station. And, uh, in the meantime, however, uh, the importance of moving forward, uh, fairly expeditiously is that we'd have a lot to do to be properly prepared for potential debt exclusion in May of twenty-twenty-two. I should also note that in the warrant for the upcoming April Town Meeting is a, uh, is an article that would, uh, provide, uh, some initial funding for the, uh, design, project management and, uh, potentially if a few elements of the construction, uh, for this new fire station so that we could come forward in a debt exclusion with a, uh, a very, a reasonably firm pro- construction cost estimate. Obviously, working closely with, uh, Fire Chief Smith and, uh, all others. We also have a process, as the board's aware, where we normally would be appointing a building committee. Uh, this all takes time. We also have to, uh, secure an owner's project manager. We know that. We've done that recently with the, uh, uh, the new, uh, senior center, uh, very successfully. So an owner's project manager, an architect. So there are a lot of steps necessary to move forward reasonably expeditiously to be to the point where we could consider a debt exclusion on the May twenty-twenty-two ballot. So that's a little bit of background and I welcome, uh, Megan and Pat, the comments from Chief Smith and/or, uh, Peter McConerty with whom we've been working closely as well. Um, also, obviously, all members, uh, uh, present, uh, currently. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Julian. So what, um, I think would make sense is if we uh, maybe open it up to conversations and then that way the chief and Peter or Julian um, can kind of weigh in, um, on specific questions. I see Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, what is the, uh, the greatest need for fire services? Is it EMT or is it firefighting equipment that, that's needed? Uh, where is the greatest need?
Chief, can you speak to that?
Good morning. I had to look at the clock to see what time it was.
Still morning.
Yeah, still. Well, it's, it's, it's both. Uh, you know, Falmouth, it, you know, the fire and rescue service is just that. We do dual, uh, activity. We're cross-trained. So our personnel are both, uh, EMTs, paramedics and firefighters first and foremost. So our response is, you know, is based on the call. So although, um, nationwide, the vast majority of calls that are handled by most municipal, you know, uh, fires, fire departments is, uh, has, has a higher majority of EMS-related calls. But it's not to say that, uh, fire calls are, um, are, are, are less of a concern for us because obviously they're more manpower-intensive. So, uh, you know, the dual service is what we currently provide for the town.
So this would have a ladder truck, a pump and, uh, an EMT, uh, vehicle?
Uh, it, it, the ladder truck would be at, housed at the Main Street Station where we have the most personnel because of the complexities with that vehicle. But, um, our plan looking forward would be to, uh, staff and, um, utilize of current resources that we use elsewhere, which is primarily an engine and an ambulance. So they would, you would have either responding from that station.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, Pam?
Is this in lieu of the West Falmouth Fire Station?
No, no, well, Julian, if you want to come on board, but no. So one of the things that this board has talked about and, um, you know, continues to discuss is the fact that, um, you know, this doesn't solve all of our, um, challenges with our fire station. So the West Falmouth Fire Station, you know, is a ninety-year-old building that we've noted, you know, some issues with and just taking it out of service creates a lot of concerns around, um, responses to that. You know, sort of section of town. So the, this is filling a space that has long been in, and Chief Smith can, um, elaborate because I know he's, he has a long history with our Falmouth Fire Department, so he's been here for many of the studies. But, um, this particular station is meant to address a very longstanding deficiency in our, um, ability to respond timely across the entire town, but also in particular to this sort of Hatchville and this section of East Falmouth. Um, and, and Chief, if, if there's something that I've missed, um, or that you could add, please go ahead and then Julian as well.
Sure. No, that was, uh, very well stated. Uh, there has been ongoing discussions since, um, my arrival to, to work in the fire department in nineteen eighty-seven, this was discussed in the nineteen ninety study. And, uh, and even back in the, at the nineteen, uh, in the nineteen ninety study, the discussion about the West Falmouth Station and the adequacy, uh, based on the age was discussed. Uh, that study had a little different direction than the recent McGrath Study, which utilized a lot more technology and mapping systems and was able to import data to look at actual run data within the town. Um, and that kind of helped to drive some of this. But, um, again, there's been very positive discussions about the needs in, in the, in both locations in town, whether it was the northwest section of town or the current Hatchville Station. But, uh, for many of you that, you know, go back, you know, to the, you know, to the nineties and such. And when Chief Pakish was chief, uh, the Hatchville Station was first and foremost being discussed. But at the time, Hatchville didn't warrant, uh, that, uh, focus like it is now, which because of the buildup and, uh, the, you know, and the, uh, activity in that area. So however, there have been other town administrator, earlier like in the nineteen ninety-eight had also looked at both the northwest and the Hatchville Station in a proposal to start concentrating on the Hatchville area. So it's been discussed for quite some time. And I think that with all the information, studies and, and the positive discussions, the station committee, I, I think we're on a good track and, and, you know, and, and I'm very glad to see this going forward and, and having, uh, you know, the, the, the productiveness that it, it truly deserves.
Can I just ask a question? Is, does Falmouth have a central dispatch?
Yes, yes, the, that consolidated dispatch was incorporated several years ago and it's currently both police, fire and marine environmental services and it's conducted at the police station. So we do have a station.
Built out a new dispatch center in the basement of the police station. Um, so it is consolidated. I just, I want to just emphasize the fact that the Select Board, and I hope any of the other members of, 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 uh, the Select Board will chime in. It, we are grappling with the issue of the northwest, um, part of town. And it is something, uh, at our last meeting that we talked about, that we really believe we can't, you know, that this moving forward with Hatchville doesn't solve all of our, our challenges. And that we're continuing to talk about staffing and we're continuing to talk about, you know, looking at where kind of that some, a new piece of some debt falloff might be where we can address trying to deal with, with northwest, what we do while we're in that interim. So that conversation is still very much ongoing. But I, I don't want anyone to think that this proposal somehow makes us, you know, like, we're all set. Everything's good with, with fire and rescue for the town of Falmouth. We, we recognize we still have challenges, particularly in that, um, you know, that part of town. But overall, as a system, the hope is that this, um, relieves some pressure off of West Falmouth. Um, and, you know, is able to fill those gaps where the data showed us we had some deficiencies. Doug Brown?
So I've been thinking that really for at least a short time, we're going to be in a six-station model. Because I just don't see how the Hatchville supplements the service from West Falmouth. The West Falmouth Station is old and tired. We may at some point find a piece of land to consolidate the Northwest. But the more I look at it, the less convinced I am that that's really a, a really wise choice. And I'm wondering if we might be in a six-station model for an extended period. But that will require another $960,000 a year to fund eight more firefighters. And it's, it's a big challenge to think about. So that's where my thinking is headed.
But can you clarify, Doug? Can you just clarify? Does that particular challenge that we've identified and continue to talk about, does that make you feel we shouldn't go forward with Hatchville? You're just muted.
No, I don't feel that, that at all. I just feel like we need to make a commitment to, you know, recognize what our planning objectives should be as we go forward. But I wouldn't want to hold up Hatchville just because we still have other things to work on.
Yep. Great. Nancy?
I agree. I agree that we shouldn't hold up Hatchville. I just think that while we're looking at that, again, considering if we're going to do a Northwest or what we're going to do, I think we need to be thinking about that concurrently. And I also think that, that the, at least from my understanding, and please correct me, Chief Smith, if I'm, if I'm wrong, that you're going to do everything you can do to keep the West Falmouth Station manned while this project is moving forward. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Great. Thanks. Any questions from planning? Yes, Charlotte?
Um, I don't know how far ahead you are in your planning for this, whether you can answer this, but I want, it, it sounds as if it's going to be a two-bay building. Is that right?
I, I don't know. Julian or Chief, do you want to speak to that? We're, the board, our board hasn't really weighed in on that piece of it at all, but the chief can, can speak to what his needs would be.
Yeah, we eventually, and we've been speaking to Peter McConerty regarding conceptual plans, but you know, the way it was, you know, I understand it is right now we're just looking at the lot. But yes, we would look at a station that would probably be at least a three-bay station only because we're looking at future growth. And it, we wouldn't want to, you know, hobble ourselves right out the gate by having something that may be necessary in the future. But we think that just by looking at some of the conceptual plans, other stations that have been built in the, in the southeast part of the state, that the, the size of the station would be, it would be adequate for us if we had a three-bay garage and it would look, look and be available for us for the current services that we want to provide out of that station.
And can, okay, and can Julian, can you or Peter, did someone, was someone able to attend the Rec Committee's meeting on the 10th?
Yes, we had two representatives there, including Joe Alenick and Peter Johnson Staub attended at my request. And it was indicated that we'll be receiving a letter from Recreation Committee Chair Bob Brown, have not yet received it. But the, the general representation that I understand is that there's understanding and support for this, for this need and that they would appreciate being kept informed and, and we'll see what else may be in that letter. I think there's been some discussion on the part of the Recreation Committee. I don't believe it's translated to any votes by that committee for some further fine tuning of suggested to the Select Board in the future of some of the remaining vacant areas of that property. But again, I don't want to speculate as to what that would be because I don't know for certain. But we understand that in general, it's recognized this is under the purview of the, of the Select Board. It's in an area identified to serve a need based on three actual years of run data, as Megan and Chief Smith have noted. And it isn't like we could take this and relocate it anywhere else in town and really get the job done as successfully. The, the major error that's made by some towns in fire station design is deciding to put a station where the town happens to have some open property, thinking that that's the best way to go. And then you pay the cost of that locational decision, year after year after year, when it's not in the correct place, responding to where actual runs are emanating. That's why we looked at three years of actual data. So long-winded response, Megan, but we do expect the letter to be forthcoming very shortly. And as I noted, I've been in touch with the Jewish Temple as well as Unitarian Church. And I've gotten some preliminary comments back from Rabbi Lieberman and just exchanged a couple emails informational purposes with the Unitarian Church, but have reminded everyone that this is on the board's agenda for Monday, the 22nd as well.
Megan, Megan, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt. I've been having desperate computer problems.
No problem, understood.
But the connectivity is just gone.
We know where, I, I know where you're located. And as my office is not far from there, I am very sympathetic. So. Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt, but.
That's okay. So yeah, I just, I only raised that issue because I just wanted everyone watching and everyone here to understand that, you know, we, we, we did some outreach to kind of two of the groups that are closest to that property. And we also wanted to weigh in. That's why the board didn't vote at our last meeting. We wanted to really get some way in from the Rec Committee. Because, you know, those fields are really, you know, highly utilized as all of our fields are. And it's, it's some of the only fields in that part of town and also includes a great basketball area that's, that was fenced in. And so it's, it's a great recreational space in that part of Falmouth. And so we wanted to be clear that this project, the way it's conceptualized at present, you know, doesn't anticipate displacing those resources for rec. And, and if people recall, that area was cited as where the playground that used to be by the Gus Canty, where the senior center now sits. That playground is going to be moved there. And that is still, when you see that diagram that we looked at earlier, still anticipated. I know, and Peter can jump in, Peter McConerty, I, I know there may need to be some adjustments, but this particular plan doesn't negate the use of that area for recreational purposes. Is that right, Peter? Do I have that right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yes, we, we, we have all the playground equipment at Public Works. What we're looking at right now is surfaces, surfaces. The federal ADA commissions allow certain surfaces and the Massachusetts ADA Commission does not, not allow the same surfaces. So what we're holding back now and the reason it's not installed right now is because of the surface, ground surface. So this, this, as Julian had mentioned, it's on the 22nd agenda. What we're looking at doing is it's going to be a draft for discussion purposes, but it's going to be an A and R plan that is going to be looking to be brought in front of the Planning Board. And, and if approved through the Selectmen, an A and R subdivision plan or an A and R plan can be brought through the Planning Board by in-house staff. It does not have, we do not have to have designers or engineers outside to do that. We'll be able to do it with in-house staff. So with that, with, with working on that, I've been working with the town manager and, and fire chief on a concept plan to show that a building, access, parking, and site amenities will work on that lot. So the main focus will be the property line, division of the property line, but it's in the background, there will also be a concept to show that a building, a certain sized building with parking is amenable to that property. Doesn't, it, it still has to go through full planning on it. But if folks remember, it's basically the same concept that we did when we built the senior center. We squared out the senior center and then we worked, all of the different departments worked and boards worked on the parking lot and the site amenities. So that'll be forthcoming on the 22nd.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions for Peter? Charlotte and then Doug Brown?
Not a question. It's just a comment.
Comment.
I think the senior center building is very, very handsome. I like it. I think it's too bad because of the requirements of parking and the heavy use that everyone anticipates of the Gus Canty and the senior center, that it is surrounded by asphalt completely. And I, I hope that isn't going to be the case with the fire station.
Great. Thank you, Charlotte. Doug Brown?
Um, just a question about the playground. Does it look like we're going to be headed for that same rubber surface that we're going to be using on the one down at the Fuller Field?
The, the, the rubber surface is an option. It's an expensive option. So there, there are other, are other alternatives. So we're looking at other alternatives. One alternative that can be used and it has a foam base to it, but it's, it's basically like a synthetic field, like the synthetic fields at the high school, but it's also can be used as a surface. It's approved as an ADA surface. So that could be a possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else for Peter or Julian or Chief Smith?
Just a comment?
Yes, sorry. Go ahead, Bob.
In regards to the building itself, I'm always in favor of building for future expansion. And I'm wondering if maybe space could be made for the emergency call center. Because I, I never thought it was a good idea to put it in the basement of the police station, which back in 1938 was underwater. And I think having it high and dry towards the center of town would be a better location for it. And I would like to see that as part of the plan, that they could actually move that up there at some point.
Great. Maybe we can, yeah, maybe Julian and Chief Smith and Peter, if we can just kind of keep that in the background of thinking about what that space might look like in the future. Recognizing that at present taxpayers have invested a ton of money in the current dispatch.
I know.
But, but Bob is, you know, but I think Bob's talking about leaving the option open and possibility rather than, you know, just building exactly for what we need down to the foot right now. So if we can think about that in the concepts as we move along. Thanks. That's a great, great idea, Bob. Anything else? So I, I will just say that this has been, just one second, honey, one second. This has been, okay, I'll be right there. This has been really helpful, I know, for our board to dive deeper into form-based zoning has been really helpful. Form-based code and, and just kind of being able to move this whole topic forward with putting together a working group. And also helpful to get some feedback around this, what is going to be, hopefully, the, when it comes to fruition, really the, the completion of a project for a new fire station that has been in the works for many, many generations. And I just want to take a minute to thank Chief Smith. In particular, he has stepped into this role at a really transformative time for that department, both with enormous staffing challenges, but also opportunities. And I know he's been working hard on that. But hiring during COVID has proved to be just as hard as everything else we're doing during COVID. But I, I think, you know, both these topics, the reason why I think we had them on the agenda today is because they're both so forward-looking and rather than thinking about Falmouth where we are now and maintaining, it's really pushing forward to make this place more desirable and, and safer as in far as the fire station goes. So just want to thank everyone. Thank you, Pat, for helping to put together and really driving the agenda. And we anticipate that we'll be meeting and speaking again about all of these issues. Pat, did you, I don't know if you can hear us, but any?
I can hear. And I'm assuming you're hearing me.
We can hear you.
Okay, right now, all of your pictures are gone.
That may not be a bad thing. It's a rough morning here in my house. So that's.
But thank you all for everything. It's been really a productive day, I think.
Agreed. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say we are posting the entire information package the board had on our website as well. So anybody who wants to take a look at the materials that they'd be shared with the boards, they've been on our website as well. Thank you.
I move that the board's selectmen, oh, sorry, the Select Board adjourns?
I have a motion. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor by roll call. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Okay. And since I can't see you, the Planning Board is adjourned and please signify by stating your name because I can't see you.
Bob Leary, aye.
Cam Harding Barrett, aye.
Charlotte Harris, aye.
John Drew, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
And Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Great. Thank you. Thanks to the staff who joined us. Thank you, Tom, very much. Thank you, Chief, Peter, and Julian, and all of our IT folks for coming in on a Saturday. Thanks, everyone.
Bye, Megan. Nice to see you.